I will call this school board meeting to order. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Ballard?
Here.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson? Mr. Sturgill?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I have a recognition of our visitors and as you guys can tell, we've been trying as we grow this thing and pull our collaborative efforts together. We've met with Pat Riley, who's our city law director and his assistant Mallory. Assistant is the proper term, right, Mallory?
Assistant law director.
Assistant law director, I'm sorry. And of course, our ADC representatives that would come are here and our attorney, Mr. Giardini, is here. So, we welcome you all. We welcome you all. So, we're going to open it up to the first hearing of the public.
Good afternoon. I am Jay Pickering. I'm the president of Lorraine Education Association and I represent the teachers from Lorraine. Before I speak, I'd like to give a few items to the board, if they would. Okay, folks. You might recall earlier this year, the CEO unsuccessfully tried to survey teachers and due to a fear of retaliation, there were very few respondents. So, in the spirit of collaboration, we, the Lorraine Education Association, asked our members to fill out a confidential survey. We had 338 teachers respond, which is 72 percent of the teachers in the district. They were asked their opinion on 15 comments. Since the district seems to value, almost to the level of harassment, giving feedback to teachers, we would like to also give them some feedback. I would like to present our results to you. I provided each of you, the Board of Education members, the results and I have a set for the CEO, but I see he's not here, so I've given that to Mr. Hill and if you could, please give that to the CEO. And as I go through this, feel free to interrupt me and ask questions if you wish. The first section with the big blue bars on it, these are district-wide questions. We posed three questions to our membership and I've tabulated them in a district-wide fashion here. The first question is to the teachers, do you have confidence in the CEO's ability to continue to lead Lorraine City School District? And the response was 323 teachers said no, eight teachers said yes, and that would mean 98 percent of the teachers do not have confidence in the CEO's ability to continue to lead Lorraine City School District. On the second sheet, which is kind of a brown or an orange graph, we also asked the teachers if they had confidence in the district leadership team's ability. And their response was 322 teachers said, no, we don't have confidence in them and 11 teachers said they did. This would be 97 percent of the teachers do not have confidence in the district's leadership team's ability to continue to lead the district. On the next page, which is a black and white one, on a district-wide basis, we asked the teachers, do you have confidence in your building's administrative team? And the dark section to each of those bars are yes and the hashtag or line ones are no. And just to point out, since the audience doesn't see this, if we take a look at this, Hellenstein Rice, that building, 100 percent of its teachers do have confidence in its leadership ability. As you look across here, buildings that have a greater than 50 percent confidence are Longfellow, Garfield, Lark and Larkmore. And Hawthorne is very close to 50 percent. And at the bottom of the confidence levels are Lorraine High School, General Johnny Wilson, Tony Morrison in Washington, and at the very bottom is Frank Jacinto, if you take a look at that.
I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
How many teachers did they participate, just so I'm clear?
338 responded.
Okay. So, out of Hellenstein Rice, we had 100 percent. Was that all the teachers, like one teacher or...?
No, just recalling offhand, probably about 70 percent of those teachers. We didn't have 100 percent in every building. We did have more than 60 percent in every building, I can tell you that.
That's great.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, on the next page is a response to... Now, we did a Likert survey of the teachers where we asked them their agreement to a comment, whether they strongly disagree, disagree, or neutral, agree, or strongly agree. This page has district-wide responses and I'll talk about the other pages, which were done in a similar manner in a second. So, the first comment that we asked them to react to was, "Student discipline is administered to students equally and fairly," meaning that for the same infraction, the same consequence is given. 36 percent of teachers strongly disagreed with this comment and 33 percent disagreed. For a total of 69 percent of the teachers disagreed or strongly disagreed with that The next comment was, "Students are always in uniform." To this statement, 49 percent of the teachers strongly disagreed, 16 percent disagreed, for a total of 65 percent of the teachers disagreed that students are in dress code. And I think if anybody's gone into the buildings, or in uniform, I should say, it's a uniform policy, that is definitely true. The next statement was, "I understand the CEO's plan." 59 percent of teachers strongly disagreed with that statement, 23 percent disagreed, for a total of 82 percent of teachers disagree or do not understand the CEO's plan, which just as a comment, it's been 18 months and we still really have no direction where we're going. I'll be honest with you. We ask ourselves every day, what do they want us to do next? And we don't know. A promise is not a plan. We need a plan. And finally, the last question was, "I believe the central administration, the chiefs, are qualified to lead Lorraine." 71 percent of the teachers strongly disagree with that statement, another 20 percent disagree, for a total of 91 percent of teachers either disagree or strongly disagree that the central administration are qualified to lead Lorraine. Okay, those are the district-wide responses. Now, for the Board of Education and CEO, you folks, there are a series of 14 different groups of responses from each of the buildings. Each of them has 11 statements that they've responded to. I will just point to the first page and you guys can take a look at the rest of them at your leisure. But the front page of all of these has four comments and I will tell you that these four comments, the CEO and I agreed on earlier this year to ask the teachers, all employees, by the way, of every building. I assume that was what was in the first survey that he didn't get very good response on, but I asked them for that survey because I could not access it even being a teacher of the district. I couldn't get into it to see what it was and they have not responded to it. But if you look at these four pieces, these are the four questions about building atmosphere that are in the, what does he call it, the big...
Big board?
Yeah, big board. The big board. And it's been left blank. So, hopefully, and Mr. Hill, please let him know that these are the responses that could fill in the big board blank there. And the four questions or comments that were asked for teachers to respond to was, the first one is, "I feel supported by the administration of my building." The second one was, "The administration of my building is providing a safe and undisturbed learning atmosphere for students." The third one is, "Student discipline is immediately addressed, is consistent, and teachers feel supported." And the final one is, "Building communication is clear and timely." So, these we were told were going to be part of the administrator, the building administration's evaluations. So, hopefully, we can get those in in time for the CEO to use those towards the evaluations. Okay? And so, I just wanted to explain those, present those to you. Any questions? All right, great. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any further comments? Hearing from the public? Nothing further? A approval of minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second. My motion is support. No call?
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Any old business? Do you have anything to add? Any old business from any of you guys? No old business to cover? Important recommendations of the treasurer?
Recommend, consider for approval, 8.01, resolution to approve CRA agreement among the City of Lorraine and SNG Properties LTD.
Any comments? Is there a motion?
Some of...
Motion in support? Any comments?
Yeah. And I just want to say, I know we've had some conversations about these abatements and I think we all agree that they are good for our city and helping our city grow, but as we see so much development occurring around us, we've been getting quite a few of these abatements to the Board of Ed. I think to Mr. Williams' point earlier when we discussed this, that we probably should take a look at the effect it has on the school district as well as what we could potentially be getting in the future. Now, again, the point being that I think I made was, some of these buildings are vacant and we're not really getting a whole lot of tax valuation out of them as we currently speak and that's why some of these are such a, for me, anyway, it's an easy decision. But, you know, what does it look like for the district in the future? You know, what are we going to possibly lose? And I know these abatements, you know, primarily cover the improvements and renovations of these facilities to get their businesses up, but also, it is, they are bringing jobs, they are increasing the value of those current buildings and I think it'd be the right thing for us to do is try to, you know, kind of take a look at it in a comparison and see what we've already approved. I know that, you know, we have all had conversations with Mayor Rittner about priorities on these abatements and, you know, we also agreed that we'd take a look at them and, you know, I think, you know, Mr. Giardini was in those conversations as well about how do we evaluate those and making sure that the city's bringing abatements to us that are beneficial and that makes sense in our priority for the city as well as the citizens of, you know, our school district.
And even if we could also, if Mr. Giardini can help, create some kind of a dashboard, some kind of objective look at these, because what happens is we're getting lots of them, but it's like sometimes apples and oranges, we don't know. And so, that way, we can establish some kind of criteria, because what I'm guessing is, the way we're doing this, and they're very valuable, then there's going to be Mr. Johnson over here who wants one and we've given it over here, but then not over there. And so, I think we should give some weight to what do they bring to underdeveloped areas of our community. We should give some weight to, especially in this development project downtown Lorraine. And it's, I think it's reasonable to over, to weight some of these things higher than others, but we just have to figure out some kind of objective means of looking at them. That way, when we weigh in our subjective viewpoints, we've got some way of assessing them, because again, we don't want to set a precedent where we're being biased towards anyone. We know that investment in downtown Lorraine is critical, but at the same time, we don't want to give people the impression that if you bring this thing, it's just going to be approved. And that's kind of, you know, I mean, I think we've done maybe five recently and we probably did one a year over the last three to four years, so...
Which I think is positive to show that there's growth going on in downtown, but I guess my bigger question that, and we did reach out to the city, but maybe it was too short of a notice for anybody to get back and put that matrix about the Domino's event. And it's one of my questions where if it comes in and it doesn't work and the timeframe expires, or if they don't meet the goals or the benchmarks that they, that we've agreed to, does it then expire? Or if the next guy who comes along and gets the business, is it automatically going with that building in perpetuity or does it stop in 15 years, 30 years? And if they don't hit those benchmarks, what's the city doing to go back to those people to say, you didn't create 50 jobs or you didn't create this kind of an income, therefore you renege, so we're taking back our offer? How does that work?
So, there are a couple of ways it can be done. In fact, a few years back, we had some discussions with the mayor and the city about them creating a set of criteria that, which they would use, objective criteria which they would use to do the same assessment, because sometimes they're giving up taxes that would go to the city's coffers. And those kinds of issues, the ones that you just described, can be put right in a development agreement or in a tax abatement agreement so that it could, if the city negotiated it this way, or if we negotiated with the city this way, to put criteria in that if it isn't met, then the abatements lost, or whatever other incentive the city may have given up could be, could be lost if they don't create the jobs that they said they would create or put the value in that they said they would put into the building. The other thing that the board could do, and has done, I might add, not all these deals are net losers to the, to the board or to the department. Not, you're never losing taxes, you're not gaining taxes, but in some of these deals, you're actually getting some payments or deals worked out where in the future you will get some compensation back for having given up the real estate taxes. And you can negotiate those. The time to do it, of course, is with the city up front.
Right.
So, they can go to the developer and say, look, this is one of the things we're going to want on this deal and we want this payment directly to the school district. And, you know, is the project one that's going to bring students in? Is the project one that's going to maybe provide jobs for students of the district or parents of students of the district? Those are all things that I think you would want to think about. But, Mr. Williams, your point's well taken. Having that set of cri, objective criteria up front makes a lot of sense, because I don't think we're at the end of seeing development downtown. In fact, I think we're...
Just the beginning.
We're at just the beginning of it, yeah.
Very good thing.
Right.
Very good thing.
My thoughts from the, you know, the auditor side of things more so than the legal side, I mean, you're always playing that balance of whether it makes sense to do these, because a lot of times, you know, maybe the good majority of the time, some of these buildings might be delinquent on their taxes prior to this and you're not only getting them, you know, to agree to this, but you're getting them that they have to be made whole on prior delinquencies. And it, maybe if you don't grant them, the building just might go delinquent itself anyway. So, you are, you're playing that balance both ways, so...
That's for sure. And the treasurer and I do talk about these kinds of things, even in reevaluations and appeals where, you know, we're coming upon that season now where we're going to be getting a bunch of appeals, because there were a lot of increases in people's real estate taxes, some pretty significant ones. So, I know we're going to be hearing from commercial property owners and Mr. Hill and I talk about those, because I do handle those for the board. We talk about those all the time and sometimes we object to any reduction in the value from the auditor.
Well, I think we're in the top three of increased value-wise, so yeah, I mean, that means everybody's value goes up for the majority, so, yeah, we should see quite a few.
Yeah, we'll see a lot, a lot of activity is coming in the morning.
No further questions? Roll call?
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Anything else from the treasurer?
No, that's it.
Lot of reports from the CEO. Do you have anything coming from the CEO?
I have nothing.
Any committee reports? So, we entered a new business. So, with our new business, there was, there's been a lot of questions going on, of course, around House Bill 70 and a lot of the questions that we have with House Bill 70, it just becomes a, we don't have the answer. And because it's not been tested in court and it's been written very, very gray, we're trying to purist, to see if we can get additional answers. So, with that, we approached our law director, who also represents the school board, as part of his job here, you know, we have our own attorney. We've also talked to the school board, I mean, to the law director, to see if there's anything else that we don't understand about House Bill 70, they clarify. So, we've, I know I've asked him a couple of questions and he had his little yellow pad, so I'm not sure if any of those questions were answered, or I'd like to welcome our law director, Mr. Pat Riley.
Well, thank you and I'm happy to be here this evening. As you have stated accurately, Mr. President, we are duty-bound by law to represent the school board. I'm glad to see you have your counsel here tonight because of the issues that face the board, at least as I've been made aware of them, are complex, complicated, and require much study to give an appropriate answer. Whether this forum, open forum, is the place for us to air those issues and give you our advice, I think is up for the board to decide. But I think it's fair to say, I have with me Mallory Santiago, who's a member of my staff, an assistant law director. I think it's fair to say that we, the board needs to understand that we don't come here as experts in school law. We have our hands full at City Hall and to take on this responsibility is going to require us to be given some patience in getting up to speed. I did have an opportunity, since we last spoke, to read House Bill 70. I have to say to you, it's the first time I've read it, because it hasn't been my responsibility before tonight. And so, it would be, I think I would be remiss to say to you that I'm in a position to give you good, solid legal advice. You follow? So, I would suggest that as we go through this, if you wish to do it in a way that I think would be appropriate, perhaps we reduce those questions to writing and submit them to my office and we'll give you an appropriate, give us an appropriate time to research and give you a good answer.
Okay. Very good.
I know also, it would be helpful for me with both, with both Mr. Giardini and Mr. Riley is, if we could, I mean, because I know there's certain things we can't really discuss in this format regarding legal advice or certain things, so, under the appropriate headings, if we could go into executive session...
Yes.
At the end of the meeting, when we have no more decisions to come out with, that would be very beneficial, because there's some questions that, that I think the attorney-client privilege, understanding, but we really wanted to make sure that folks understood that we were having questions about legal options, about understanding and explaining of certain things in House Bill 70 that we wanted legal opinions on, as opposed to, what did I play a lawyer on television kind of thing? Which, there's a lot of that going on, there's a lot of Googling going on, and so, we start to speculate and we have all these ideas and we need someone who is in that expertise area to kind of give us some clarity on standing, you know, on what precedent is and what our approaches should be, so...
Bill, do you have any further? Do you have any questions? And we do have some other things that we have to go over with some pending litigation that we will have to go into executive session to discuss, so... With that, is there anyone else that has anything to add? Okay. We have our next hearing of the public.
Hello, my name is Rhoda Lee. I live at 1904 West 22nd Street in Lorraine, Ohio. I'm glad of some things that came out. I read the paper over the weekend and it seemed to, as you stated, Ms. Ballard, some confusion. I don't know what the confusion is bearing, but at last we've come out, we do have legal representation. I wish you had done this in 2009, when we brought it up, that the possibility that House Bill 70 would be passed, where we could have stopped this. Mr. Giardini, can I ask you a question? As the attorney for Lorraine City School System, have you had any interaction, say, with the distress commission or looking over House Bill 70 as it may relate to the Lorraine City Schools?
Ms. Lee, I have not had any interaction with either the current academic distress commission, or if you recall, we had one prior to the current ADC. I've never had any interaction with them. They have their own lawyer. It's, it's a lawyer out of the Attorney General's office for the state who represents the ADC. And what was your other question about who I'd had it? Oh, with regard to House Bill 70?
House Bill 70, yes.
I mean, I've reviewed the law, I reviewed the law back when it was passed. I was asked for my views on the law back then and it's no secret that I thought that, well, from a personal philosophical point of view, I thought the law was not well thought out.
Yeah, unconstitutional.
Not a good law. I did feel that the state of Ohio has the constitutional obligation to provide public education to every student, you know, in the state, and if that's how they want to run the railroad, that's what they can do.
Okay, that was my question too, because if you all remember back then, I asked the same question and stated, I felt that it was unconstitutional and taxation without representation.
There are a lot of people who share that view, Ms. Lee, and the courts, I think, are about to start giving us some answers on that, those questions.
Okay. And my other question too, I, you know, I understand that the CEO, who is here now, he has engaged, and I say has engaged, the community and setting up the task force in dealing with many of the issues that are confronting our kids, because as far as I'm concerned, a lot of it is nonsense, it's about the kids. And it seems that we've forgotten that that is the main issue, is the education of our children. And if we look at the city of Lorraine and our school district, and let's face it, we are a multicultural school district. 85 percent of our youth are multicultural. We have many out here who are traumatized, we have those who are homeless, we have those in here who have come, say, from the hurricanes and stuff and have settled here in Lorraine. And, you know, I think that that's where our focus should be. I understand our teachers and I was listening to them, but the teachers' union, I wanted to know what would be their relation in Mr. Riley from that as it relates to the school board rather than the CEO? Or is, does he have autonomy as far as that goes?
Through the chair to Ms. Lee. I did have a chance to review House Bill 70 last night. It's codified in what I believe is revised code, chapter 3302. And if my recollection serves me correctly, at 3302.10, the powers of the CEO are enumerated specifically, line by line. And if my recollection serves me correctly, in that series of powers that are granted to him by statute, he has powers over all contracts. So, if you're asking me whether he has control over the contract, that is the agreement that cements the relationship between the teachers' unions and the school district, I'm going to say to you, yes. If your question is more than that, then I'd be happy to go further, but it seems to me, based upon my review of the statute over the last couple of days, that in that particular code section, he has power over the contracts that the school district has entered into with other parties.
Okay, because one of my other issues is the fact that it seems that, and I have to say this in all honesty, and you know, I do say what I feel, that we are directing our attention and focus on the man, the CEO, instead of what the real issues are coming here. And let's face it, this is not a Lorraine problem, it's a national trend that's coming about to privatize education. So, I think that we're, don't wag the dog about to tell, okay? As you say, but in looking at this, and I'm very happy that both Mr. Giardini and Mr. Riley are here today and that can come together and really look at House Bill 70 to see what it is all about. The man, if he is clearly doing what he's supposed to do, let's deal with what our children need here. Our kids need us and we can see it. You all come in, you talk about safety and all of that. Kids have been fighting in Lorraine City Schools for how many years? Most of it is off school grounds. You don't take these situations and blow it up. And I would say to this board and I would say to the Lorraine, hey, stop it, let's come together. You're hurting our community and hurting our kids. We're talking about businesses coming into the city. We need our schools, we need good schools, we need good teachers. We need our schools, we need good schools, we need good teachers, we need a solid community. And that's what we should be working toward. But it looks like that, to me, it's a vendetta. And I'll tell you, I for one do not like it. And I don't think it's fair to the community, and I know it isn't fair to our kids. That's all I have to say.
Any additional comments from the public? Please approach the mic.
I appreciate your time, and I know it's valuable, so I won't take much of it. But my name is Steve Fell. I represent SNG Properties, who you just discussed a little bit ago, and Domino's. I'm also the franchisee and the business owner of the building. And what I want to tell you is that it was, it was a long process for us to, to make the decision to purchase the Driscoll Building, to bring the Domino's here. I'm excited, beyond excited, to tell you that we're definitely moving forward with this project. We're going to get it done as quickly as we can. You know, the streetscape came up, kind of unexpected, we didn't know what was happening. But it was a bonus for us to, to realize what the city's going to invest in itself down there, and in beautifying the downtown area. So I know, once upon a time, there used to be three different units, the Domino's Pizza units that served the city of Lorain, and then they're all gone. One moved into Amherst and, and sort of picked that up. So we're very excited about coming back to town. What I would tell you, though, is that Mr. Williams's point earlier, in your discussion that you brought up, sir, about tax abatements and how you look at those things, I agree with you 100%. I honestly do. These aren't something that you just want to hand out. These are something that I think you should have a process, you should have some kind of a, meet the criteria, and things like that, okay? You people have a beautiful building here, you have a wonderful city, that the city is working very hard to bring businesses back in, and attracting businesses back in. Some of the issues that were brought up here are real, and, and, you know, to sit in your chairs is a very difficult thing, and I don't know that a lot of people understand it. I have a little bit of an insight to that. My, my brother-in-law is the president of the school board for Norwix State Schools, and my wife has been a teacher at Norwix High School for 25 years. So I've seen a lot of these things kind of come and go. So I do agree with the points on, on the tax payment. Certainly, it helps us, it helps us, because we are going to invest close to half a million dollars down in between the purchase of the building and renovation, and opening the business. And that's a tough thing, it's a big thing, on a hope and a prayer, on a renovation that's basically just starting. But we also believe that we're going to attract more businesses to come down there. And I think somebody brought up the point, yes, we will be more than, more than likely, 90% of the people that we employ will be directly from the city of Lorain, and the majority of them will be young adults. I mean, first-time jobs, first-time employment, things like that. So a lot of students, especially from high school, work for me in my other units and so on and so forth. So there, there is a lot of things to kind of weigh and measure on those sides, those types of things as well. But I didn't want to leave without letting you know that, A, I was here, and B, I heard your, your discussion, and I think there's a lot of legitimacy in that discussion that you should consider moving forward, and to tell you that I do appreciate you granting it to us. One of the things that we thrive on as a company is our relationship with the school systems. It's not for business purposes, because I'm not here to do business as, as an occupier of the city of Lorain, but I want to be a partner. My very first Domino's I bought in 1992 is in Vermillion. I've always been very, very close to this community. And we, we serve our community, and schools have always been the benchmark of every single community. The strength of a community is in its school systems, more times often than not. If there's a strong school system, there's industry, there's business, there's, there's things thriving within. Cities that have a very teeter-totter type of relationship with their schools, or schools that are suffering or failing, and especially state-run school systems, let's be honest, I mean, they have a lot of, they have a lot of hurdles in front of them when it comes to bringing business. So again, I go back to my point earlier, sitting in your chairs, you have a monumental task ahead of you every single day, and this is just a small sampling of, of the business that you deal with, that we've heard here tonight so far. I understand it, and I appreciate it. I thank you again for your, for your consideration on the abatement that we applied for. We're excited to get to town as quickly as we can. We're going to wait till the streets are, are done before we open that business, but we're, we're here to be a partner with the schools, and work with the schools in any way the schools need it. So indirectly, the schools, I believe, will get something in return for, you know, it may not be the tax dollars, but the student life will be, I think, enhanced by our presence, just because we, we try to support the schools, the athletics, the music, the, all of the things that happen within a community school like this. And that's the unfortunate thing when the states take over, right? First thing they want to cut out, you know, these things, they want to get rid of those academic types of activities, you know, because it's not part of the requirements. We want to deal with just, just what's required. We don't want to do football anymore, we don't want to do band anymore, because you can't afford it. So protect that, that they will hold hands as hard as you can, as long as you can, keep them out of here. Appreciate the fact that they wanted to help you build the building, and that's all I want for them. But anyhow, maybe I went longer than I wanted to, but again, I appreciate it. Thank you very much for all you guys do for your community and your students, and your, and your town, because it's vital, it's certainly vital. Thank you.
Well, I spent a lot of years in the pizza business myself, and I say thank you for investing your dollars.
Well, we're hired.
I need a night gig, that's for sure. So thank you so much for all you do.
Hi, Bambi Dillon, 228 Delaware Avenue, Lorain, Ohio. I just wanted to mention that this past weekend, I had the pleasure of being here at Lorain High School, and being at the judge at the Vex Robotics Competition. And I just wish more people in this room could attend this competition and see how great the middle school and high school kids are in developing their robots. They take it from scratch, and they meet for almost a whole year, and it's, it's just wonderful. And I'm very proud to say that Longfell Middle School is qualified to go to state. So I hope that the school board could recognize them, maybe at one of your school board meetings, to show them appreciation about the good job that they're doing. And not only that, it goes to, kind of like Rhoda Lee says, about everybody working together. I was very proud, Deb Hansen, Henson, from Longfell, is in charge of the robotics program. Now, when I was here, I do a lot of volunteering in all the schools with different things. And it was very impressive to see how many teachers and staff volunteered their time on Friday and Saturday to make this competition a great event. There were 66 high schools from around the state of Ohio that attended this competition, and she received nothing but so many positive remarks about it. So I think it goes to show you that the Lorain teachers and staff, when it comes to time, they do pull together, they do volunteer their time, and they do care about the students.
Thank you. Anything further in the hearing from the public?
Summer Harvey, 832 Highland Park Boulevard, Lorain. With the upcoming town hall, and knowing if we're going to find out, schools are closing, I just wanted some clarification as to who owns the school buildings in Lorain.
State. Eighty-two percent of it, right? State.
We're going, we're going to.
It's funded with state money, but they're owned by the Lorain Board of Education.
So the Board of Education owns the buildings?
Correct.
Okay, so like, if next month he decides, or just whatever, any day, he wakes up and decides, I'm going to pick this school, and we're going to dissolve it, okay? Now, after that is done, does he have to get approval? Or what is the process after that, if he's going to lease to a charter company?
That's actually a law that's been in existence for quite a long time. If the, if the school district decides it has a building it can no longer use, that it's no longer needed in the system, and we have several buildings that we felt that way about, under Ohio law, you first have to offer them for sale to charter schools, and then if no charter school buys them, then we can sell them to a third party, or we can tear them down.
But who's "we"? Is that the school board?
The school board.
Okay, so if Mr. Hardy decides he's going to dissolve a school, then the school board has to allow for that to be an option for a charter school to purchase?
Yeah, that's, that's the, really, not a question.
If I, if I can, I think that's why we have these three folks at the table with us, because there are a lot of gray areas in House Bill 70 that aren't very clear. And again, it was a poorly-written bill that was passed overnight, amended, I mean, we all get that it's unconstitutional, and again, that's the reason why this Board of Education has engaged our legal counsel, as well as the law department, to assist us in understanding what legal issues this Board of Education can raise, if something like that were to occur.
So, is there an answer to that question?
There's not an answer to that.
There's not an answer, okay. So, but like, next month, or this month, I'm sorry, when we have that town hall, and there are, if there are schools that are going to be put up for, to be dissolved or whatever, like, is that, like, at what point do we address that? Or who addresses it?
First, from a board perspective, all of this is a process that takes a certain amount of time. We had challenges before around, how do we do with this, and we have to post this, and then we have to do that, and that was when we didn't have the ambiguity of House Bill 70. So this law about dispersing property and buildings and those things have always been kind of challenging, and there's always a process. So when we get to this, if we ever get to that other phase, understand there will be a process, it's not just like this is a slam dunk, done now. And I think that it's uncharted territory. And so the board, when it says the board is the owner, the board is a steward in trust of the citizenship. So it is the citizens of Lorain that own, and we act on behalf of that citizenship.
Right.
Okay? So that the citizenship will very clearly inform us of what they would desire, and so that's how we advocate. I mean, it's not going to be a slam dunk, clear thing, but don't think that the power of authority, of final choice, lies with this body. This is where communities come together, and they assess their values, and what's important to them, and their tax money that paid for these things, and their authority in their community of what is their property, is what is part of, of their community. And so it's never going to be five folks on a board, and only administration. There's always, and again, House Bill 70 gives clear authority to a CEO. But communities, just because House Bill 70 does that, doesn't mean communities don't have a recourse. And I think that's where we, as a community, decide what's best for our district, and then we advocate effectively. And then we will use legal counsel, we will use public pressure, we will use every means necessary, so that we can protect our assets. So again, it's, it's never going to be just the board, and, and I think, I'm not disagreeing with Giardini, but we do act on behalf of the citizenship, and I think it's a very uncharted territory. We've never been there before. And so be prepared for.
Mr. Riley, if I may address you through the chair, did I do that right? Do you remember seeing anything about property management, when you went through House Bill 70, or something that pertains to the question that I'm asking?
Through the chair to Ms.
Harvey.
Harvey. I can't say with any, you know, absolute certainty that I understand the issue well enough to give some thoughts about it. I would have to say that if legal title is vested in the Board of Education, if that's the way land ownership is vested here, in the statute that provides for a process if the building is to be sold, or sold or disposed of, just the law in Ohio, my thoughts would be that the law in Ohio is going to have to be followed, so. The impact of House Bill 70, as has been commented here, remains to be seen, but if the law is clear about how it is you dispose of school board property, that would, that's what I would expect the process to be. Not unsimilar to the process that the city of Lorain has to go through when it disposes of property. It's a statutory process, and that's the way by which we, we dispose of real estate that we don't need. The process here is clear by statute, and I would expect the school board to follow the statutory process.
Okay, so then maybe the recourse is not completely clear, but could we rest assure that if next, if on Thursday, he decides that there is XYZ school that will be dissolved within this year period, or whatever time he's giving them, we could maybe rest assured that it's not necessarily a clear cut? He gets to do, he gets to close the school, and he gets to sell it and do whatever it is? There will be other stipulations put in place?
Well, I mean, with the qualification, that House Bill 70 does overlay this in some way, which is not clear to any of the people who sit here tonight. Again, I would say that whatever statutory process it is that governs the disposition of Board of Education real property is the process I would expect to be followed.
Okay, thank you very much.
I just want to ask one question, so I can understand this. When you are a charter school, you get the allocation that we would give for the students, but the charter schools do not get any property taxes. Is that correct?
It's with the, it's, the idea behind that is the state assigns a dollar amount, that dollar amount flows through our district at 100%. The thought behind it is that some of that dollar amount is funded with property tax, essentially. Because we have to take, what they look at is, so you have your local tax dollars, your per-student amount that you should be bringing in, is partially state-funded amount, partially locally-funded amount. Their idea is, it doesn't take into account delinquencies, it doesn't take into account, you know, we're not receiving 100% of our local funds, based on our collection percent. So to answer your question, I guess I went way down a path, but indirectly it is, but that state-assigned amount, so if they, we get 50, or 2,050 per student, based on that, they give us a small percentage, or not a small percentage, just like 80-some percent of it. The locally-funded piece, we may not be collecting 100% on, because that's the tax revenue, the local tax base. But they get the full amount.
And I think the second part of that is, are they?
Yeah, if it's $6,000, we give away $6,000.
They get the whole, regardless.
But out of the $6,000 part that is from...
We might not collect the full per-student amount, they're getting the full per-student amount. We're a pass-through.
So they get part of our property taxes.
Indirectly, if you look at it that way. Based on, based on the state formula.
That I don't mind at all. I vote for my Lorain City Schools, public schools.
The fan amount that we don't actually ever collect, so.
That's ridiculous.
Can I say something to Mr. Riley, Mr. Giardini, right here? We were talking and discussing House Bill 70. Would you find out, and I don't know if you would know, kind of, where, and what committee is House Bill 512 in at this point?
I don't know.
Or will it come out? Because if you're thinking House Bill 70 is something, take a look at 512. Where we're just about to dissolve everything, and as Bambi said, the major amount of our tax dollars would go to whoever is, or what corporation is running that charter school. And I would say, it's not in the hands of Dr. Hardy or anyone. This is a trend. Maybe we should talk to Ms. DeVos, who is our U.S. Secretary of Education, who has been around, and I don't know if you've heard, going around the state of Ohio. Touting and taking over and putting our schools, districts in this position. And I think that, as I told you before about 5, one's House Bill 70, now I'm telling you 512. I may not live to see it, but you better be very, we better be very, very careful. Okay? Because Caesar in the White House, all right?
Hello, Barbie, Washington, Riverside Drive. I know we continue to ask questions, the board doesn't really control, but we ask if there's been any answers to curriculum. That's my favorite question. Mr. Hardy did a study, and only 17% of our curriculum is geared towards the standards. It just seems obvious that if we want to get out of academic distress, that that is something that would be addressed. Do any of you guys know, or any plan to address that?
We've not, I've not gotten any report on that.
We have heard from several parents that there are kids with special needs, whose needs aren't being met. Have you heard any, anything about that, or any solutions to that? Have you heard any, anything about that, or any solutions to that?
We have not.
I mean, I've heard about them, and I reported them to Ohio Department of Education, and they restated House Bill 70, the law, to me in their response to me.
They're, the kids that have special needs, IEPs, 504.
501 plan?
Five, 504.
504.
Oh. Yeah. And IEPs, the kids, their needs aren't being met. There was an email sent out from an administrator wanting to give an evaluation to the children without accommodations. I, and I understand that some of these problems are not new. I, two of my children are older now. I have a 15-year-old, is over there doing homework after softball practice. And so, I have a little bit more, a little more time on my hands to get involved. I can't fix or address what the board did yesterday, what the previous administrators have done. I'm paying attention now. I'm concerned about my child and all of the children in the district. It doesn't appear that the state is fixing everything like they had planned to with House Bill 70. This is why we're asking questions. If it would be okay to ask the Academic Distress Commission, have you, specifically you, Ms. Meander, have you received any of the communications that you have asked for?
Sure.
Yes.
President, no, I have not received any information. I have done a series of surveys through the teachers' union. Mr. Coughlin and I, I was invited to an LEA, to LEA meetings. There were four meetings held over the last couple of weeks. I've collected an abundant amount of information and data. I have a report that I've been working on, and I will be sharing certain parts of my report at next week's board meeting with the joint with the mayor present as well. Some of my findings were similar to what the LEA findings were. And one of my, the focus question on my survey was about curriculum. And so, and I've got a long list of concerns as far as IEP accommodations being met, classroom inclusion sizes, ELL services being given to students. So, I'm in the midst of collecting all of that information, and I will be prepared to share a report next week.
Thank you.
Courtney Nazario, West 11th Street. My question goes back to the last board meeting that I never did get an answer to of, kind of going back to what Barbie said, and the inclusion and whatnot. We've taken Title I services out of the schools. The kids are not being pulled anymore because we're paying deans in all of the schools. We're using that money. I still have not got an answer as to how is that working? I know they plan a literacy night. The last literacy night at Admiral King had 12 students, I believe, four families. Five of those were my kids. So, how that is helping to have these deans? One of the deans came into my daughter's class the other day, dealing with discipline, said to a child to come out of the room because he was ripping up his behavior chart. He told her no. She said, "You need to come down to the office." He told her no again, threw the behavior chart, and she said, "Do you want to come play with slime?" He got up and left. My daughter said, "I want to go play with slime." I mean, so the kids that are, they go play with slime, they go play with Play-Doh, they get rewarded by games, and that's what the deans are doing. So, a teacher could be pulling these students out, giving them the 504 plan, following the 504 plan, following the IEP, but we have a dean taking out a student for a half hour to let him cool down instead of, I mean, sending him home, suspending him if he needs to be suspended. No, we have to let him cool down in another room and play with slime. So, I guess, I'm not saying every student needs to be suspended, but I am saying it is not fair to tell a student in the middle of a class that, "Do you want to come play with slime?" So, you get to be rewarded for doing something wrong. When you have, and then the rest of the class had to go on with their reading lesson. How hard is that for a teacher? A teacher now has to teach a class where the majority of these third or fifth graders probably would rather be playing with slime. And anybody could agree with that. So, I guess that's my question again, is how is this Title I money being used appropriately to pay the deans instead of having teachers to individually work with students?
Real quick, I am, was a special ed teacher, ed teacher. My name is Nancy, and before I retired, they took me out of my classroom and made me an inclusion teacher. So, it's been going on, I had to work with other teachers. So, we don't have individuals. I would pull my kids out and take them back to my room myself. But it was from the state that says we had to be inclusion. We had to be in there with other teachers. So, that came down from the state. The IEPs have on a behavior plan, so we have to follow, if it's a behavior, we have to follow a behavior plan because that's from the state. So, if it says you have to do such and such and such before you can do whatever you want to call suspend the kid, we have to, we had to do it. So, it's just not to throw them out and try to suspend them, but we have a plan, and you have to follow that plan, or the parent can come back and do what they used to do, sue you. Thank you.
Barbie Washington, Riverside Drive. We also need to make sure that we're following the IEP and the plan to give the students what they need. We need to teach them on their grade levels. We need to give them their pull-out time. We need to make sure that they have the tools and the support that they need to succeed. And no one seems to be doing that.
Hi, my name is Charmaine Williams. I live on 23rd Street, like a block away from here. I have been a volunteer citizen, because I have no children, for the last seven and up till winter break. I was volunteering in different elementary schools. The young lady that got her parents spoke about the discipline issues. I can totally vouch for her. I've seen fifth graders hit the smaller kids, and all they were told was, "Don't do it again." I've seen teachers be ridiculed for trying to instill that discipline on the children because nothing's being done in the office. I totally agree with the, with the Title I teachers. I've watched kids who couldn't recognize letters struggle all through the year, working with the Title I teachers. By the end of the year, they can read full sentences. I don't understand why they got rid of it because it was actually working for the kids that had issues. These teachers get ridiculed all the time. As you can see, I wore my shirt. I support them wholeheartedly because they, they have so much on their plate. You have teachers in, in a classroom with 30 children. That's 30 different personalities, 30 different needs, and they're trying their best to work with each child and fulfill what that child needs for the day. And when you have one child or a couple of kids that are acting out and distracting the whole entire class, it's hard to teach what you're supposed to be doing for the whole day. My issue is, I'm very vocal online. I'm sure some of y'all have seen me pop up in posts because I don't bite my tongue for anybody. My issue is, we are, there are people like myself who are trying their best to help these kids. I don't have kids. I gave, for the last seven and a half years, I've given every second I've had extra for these kids. I'm talking about, I'm there when they get there to the time they're leaving. And I work with them. I've had teachers have me take the ones that are struggling into the hallways because there's no Title I teacher to work with the kid that can't, you know, that's struggling with the reading, and they don't know their words very well. I've done flashcards, sight words. I've ran copies for teachers. I've sat in the classroom while the teacher runs to the restroom because there's no help. The people that have come in, I've watched people come and go, and they don't stay because they're treated like garbage. That's why I walked away. I was volunteering all the way up until winter break, and I was made to feel like I wasn't wanted anymore. And I don't understand, like, how people can criticize these teachers. These teachers go through a lot, from before school starts all the way till, some of those teachers are there, like, 6 o'clock at night, still trying to catch up to what they need to have done for the day. And all I'm saying is, people keep saying, "Oh, we need more parent involvement." We've been needing that since back when I was in school. I'm almost 40, you know? And the parents, we needed parents in the schools back then, you know? So, I'm not going to hold my breath for that. But you do have people like myself, there, I can think of a good 20 people that are willing to come in and willing to fill those spots and willing to help. But you got to make these people feel wanted. You can't, you know, have these people in your building and then treat them like, you know, they're not important, like, what they're doing is not important. And what I did every day, I know I made a difference. I go, any store I go to, the kids see me, they come running screaming, "Ms. Williams, Ms. Williams," because they know I care about them. Every single thing I did for these kids was because I cared about them. And I'm tired of the back and forth. The bottom line is, Mr. Hardy makes the final decision on everything. So, I mean, I don't understand why people can't get that through their heads. You have all this passion. Barbie, you're awesome. Like, seriously. I love your passion for the school. I love your passion for these babies, because I have that same passion. But it's so easy for that passion to go away by the way that people are treated, starting with the teachers. And then another issue I want to, I'm sorry, I'm just going from here to there, but another issue I wanted to ask to maybe you all, if you know the answer, why, in the seven years I've been here, how come the teachers don't have more input on the changes being made in the district? They are the ones who work with the children the most. They spend the most time with these kids. They know what these kids need. They know what these kids are going through, but no one actually sits down and asks the teachers, "What can we do to make this better?" Or if they are asked, they're not even, they're not listening to the answer of what the teachers are saying. They're not taken seriously. And my question is, why don't the teachers have more of an input? They spend, like, the principals, yes, they're in the building, they have a relationship with the kids, but it's different from the teachers, the volunteers, and the teacher aides. Those are the people who spend the bulk of the day with those kids while they're in that building. But they have no say in anything. No one ever listens to them. No one ever takes what they have to say and actually implement it into making changes for the better for the kids. And, like, I'm sorry, I'm shaking because I'm so frustrated because I, when I first started volunteering in this district, the reason I volunteered was because of the passion from the teachers, the love of the kids, like, the love that they have for the children is amazing to me. Like, there are some really awesome teachers in this district. I mean, I'm not saying every single teacher in the district is perfect because I don't know that. I can only speak for the three buildings I volunteered for, for the last seven and a half years. And those people were awesome. They gave their all, and they continue to give their all, even though most of them feel defeated. Most of them feel like their voice doesn't matter. So, all I'm asking is, please, if, if changes are going to be made, can you please allow the teachers to have more of an input? Because at the end of the day, they know what these kids need. They see every day. They play mom, they play counselor, they play doctors. Half the time, the buildings don't have nurses. There's a building right now where kids haven't had library all year. You want the reading to improve, but they haven't been to library all year. The room is just literally there, and that breaks my heart. Because I remember when I went to Irving Middle School, we had some awesome librarians who opened our eyes to reading. They encouraged us to reading. I didn't have that encouragement at home. I came from a single mom. You know, my dad was nowhere around. My mom was the only one taking care of me. And I, my mom worked a lot of hours. So, the school was my sanctuary. They, the people in the building were the ones who made the difference in my life. I mean, there are teachers, I can think of a good 30 teachers I've had, in the whole entire time I've been in Lorraine City Schools, and I went through the system, that changed my life for the better. They encouraged me to do better. They opened my eyes to so much more. And you have that here in this district. There are some amazing teachers that do their best to try and educate these kids, but they don't get the credit that they deserve.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'll be back next week.
You are always welcome back.
Yeah, I have a lot to say.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hi, Mary Miller, from East 34th Street in South Lorraine. Question, if anybody might know, has Youngstown crossed the bridge of a dissolving building or announcing that they're...
Not that I'm aware of. I've talked to some of their school board people today, and that's never come up in a conversation.
So, it is completely unprecedented, I guess, under House Bill 70. If there is one that's announced to be dissolved, that would be the first one under House Bill 70, is how I'm...
It hasn't happened yet, yes.
Okay. To reiterate on what Ms. Williams just said, I've been a volunteer since my children have attended school. My oldest is a third grader, and she's been with Lorraine City School District since preschool. Over those years, I've done everything I could, wherever I've been invited to, asked if I was available. Last year, we were involved in the Parent Advisory Council, prior to that, for years prior to that as well. We've run over a lot of things. I don't want to get into all the specific details, but I do want to say the first bad taste in my mouth was this last year, you know, at the end of the year, there was no volunteer appreciation, anything, not a card. Usually, there's a luncheon, a little mug or umbrella or something, you know? "Thank you for your time." This year, nothing. Not a shout-out, I don't even believe, on the Facebook page. So, I'm like, okay, you know? I'm asking around, and I was told that it was like a budgetary concern, so that was that. I went along with, you know, whatever was happening up until the point of this fall, where I started being very vocal. At the beginning of the year, we inquired where the Parent Advisory Council was meeting, when, nothing, it's been handled by a different party now, it's not my job, somebody else is deciding that. We're going to hold a restorative circle hour, which happened once, and I want to say maybe twice, but I know one was called in response to the violence, which has, yes, always been a part of every school district. 20 years ago, when I graduated, we had fights in high school as well, but we also had consequences. We were also told, "If you do this, you're suspended. If that person does that, they're suspended for the same amount of time." We weren't given, like, "This dean will suspend you for a day, maybe this one will give you an in-school suspension, maybe they'll tell your parents, maybe they'll contact your parents after the five dress code violations, maybe they won't. Maybe they'll just send you a letter saying, after 10, your kid is in, in school suspension, but after 5, they're supposed to contact you," but they never did. So, whatever policies they have in place, they're not following. Little things like that, that'll get you to parents. But then the grading system, it's midway between the third now quarter, and I'm still waiting for answers from my second-quarter son's, his entire class, actually, that I noticed there was an inconsistency with. And I've inquired with the deans, the principal, and the teacher in my school, and I'm still waiting. I got a voicemail on Friday that said, you know, they'll get back to me. I talked to somebody today, they'll get back to me again on this coming Friday, so it is what it is. I mean, safety and grades. If I can't get that, what do I do as a parent? If I can't get safety and grades for my kids, what do I do as a parent? I don't understand. Can anybody help me out? Am I supposed to just say, "Oh, well, this year," you know, throw it away, they're learning? How? Are we doing standards-based grading in the high school? Can anybody answer that? I don't think the administration can answer that because they haven't provided that answer as I've been asking. If they are doing it next year... If they are doing it next year, why are the teachers not being trained on it already? Does anybody know if they have been? Are they? Is there any professional development on that for the high school teachers for next year? We just going to wait until October again? Also, vendettas. I'm not involved in any, I have no loyalties to anybody here, anybody at City Hall, anybody at the state. I have no loyalties to anybody in my group. I have loyalties to my children. That's my only loyalty until their peers. It'd be easy for me to yank my kids. It'd be easy for me to sell my house. It wouldn't be easy for me to walk away from the other children of Lorraine. I don't care who doesn't like who for why on the board or wherever it comes from. 20 years ago, last year, 10 years ago, it doesn't matter to me anymore. It's like, this is here for today. This is happening this year. These kids are not receiving their services. The kids that were receiving them last year are not receiving them this year. I have parents that I know, kids that I know. I have a junior that I work with who is, a junior, obviously, I said that, but who started as a freshman here. He said, "The, the new building, it was his freshman year, everything went great. Last year, everything was good. This year, it started off with the deans," he said, specifically the deans, "and the culture of violence that he said that there was no consequences and people were taking it overboard that he left the school." So I can also, if anybody wants to speak with his mother or whatever have you, to find out that that is the real truth and that is really happening and it wasn't actually being, like, blown out of proportion. How could you first combine the schools from the other, like, the New Beginnings Academy? Then you're going to change the whole, like, way you handle discipline. At the same time, you have how many new people, 15, whatever it is, that are running these grades? And you're also changing the secure, like, the head of security as well. So it's just a recipe for disaster. If the deans and the principals, let's say they are qualified, capable, okay, I'm not maybe saying, you know, that they're not as a whole, whatever it may be, they're set up to fail. Whatever Hardy put in place as far as greetings, as far as the way, you know, you handle the resorted justice, which has, by the way, in studies, been proven not to work in many cities as near as Pittsburgh. So they're set up to fail. If I was a dean or a principal in one of these buildings, I would be upset with the administration. So I'm just going to kind of leave it at that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? And I will say, so you guys know, we typically have a three-minute time limit in those remarks from individuals, but I know there's a lot of energy, a lot of emotion, and a lot of people feeling as though they've not been heard up to this process. So I've given a lot of leadway in how we, how we kind of curtail the mic, but we eventually, pretty quick, are going to have to go back to that three-minute time limit. But we want to hear the things that are going on in our district and from that community. And if there are no other comments from the public?
Could I say something?
Yes.
I just want to thank you for your comments regarding the teachers. I know as a educator in this district for 28 years, one of the things that, and I'll speak about this next week, but Diane and I really found that the emotional kind of beat-down feeling that you described is very real. And for some of our educators, it's troubling that they are trying to do is, like, Ms. Williams, is that correct? What Ms. Williams had said on a daily basis under circumstances that are, sometimes you couldn't even make some of the things up that the teachers in our buildings are having to deal with. Whether it be homeless children that don't have food, I know teachers have collected food to give them so they can take food home with them to eat, providing them rides and things that they, you would not think that I would do as a parent, but teachers are doing those things for our kids. I've had conversations with teachers that, you know, are concerned about, "We're going to have a three-day weekend. Will this kid or this group of kids have food and things to go?" I know I had, one of the, a teacher came up to me the other day and said, a student who was going to foster care, he missed his lunch in school and said to the teacher, "Do you have any snacks?" And he was like, "No, I don't." He's like, "Well, it's okay. Sometimes I'm used to not eating until the next day." And the teacher's like, "Wait a second. Let me go get you something so you could take that home with them." So I, I do appreciate as a, as an educator in this district for many years, your comments. And oftentimes, I think teachers have gotten a bad rap in a lot of what House Bill 70 has been looked upon. It's the teachers' fault. Why aren't the teachers doing more? I, and, and I'm not even going to divulge some of the comments publicly at this time because it's probably not appropriate, but it really makes my blood boil to hear some of the negativity that I hear about Lorraine City School teachers because I know how dedicated they are. And I see them volunteer and I see them doing the things that they do. And I think, I just wanted to say thank you for, for making those comments.
No further comments. We actually need to go into scheduling the next board meeting, or do we need to go into executive session first?
Our next board meeting is scheduled next Monday. That's a regular meeting.
Okay, our next board meeting, board meeting will be on the 26th, next Tuesday, and that will be the joint meeting, that's Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Yes. With the mayor. The ADC has been invited and as well as the CEO, and hopefully you can all come back. We are going into executive session under C.
C and E.
C and E.
Okay.
And we, pardon me? The 26th at 5:00. Yes, ma'am. And coming out of our meeting, we will be taking no additional action. So at this point in time, unless you want to stick around, I need a motion to go into executive session?
Support.
Move in support. Go call.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
We'll be going into executive session at this time, and when we come back out, we will be taking no further actions. Thank you.
This has been a production of Lorraine City Schools TV20 WLCS.